To call the Springboro Board of Education meeting to order at this time. Would you please call the roll?
Charles.
Yes?
James. Jim.
Here.
Steve.
Here.
At this time, I would ask all individuals to please stand as we do the Pledge of Allegiance. Following the pledge, I'd also like the audience to please remain standing for a moment of silence in behalf of Craig Colston. So first, the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As I stated a moment ago, the Board of Education would like to observe a moment of silence in recognition of the many contributions that Mr. Craig Colston made to our school board and our community. For those of you who do not know him, he served on the board for two terms. He was a driving force in our community on any number of fronts. He will be sorely missed. At this time, please join me by bowing your heads in a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, the first item is the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to go ahead and adopt the agenda as it's been presented?
So moved.
So second?
Second.
All in favor of the vote called?
I'm Craig Malone.
Yes.
I'm Jim Regano.
Yes.
Steve Stuckey.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 1.3, approval of the August 12, 2014 minutes. Is there a motion to accept these minutes?
So moved.
So second?
Second.
Vote called, vote please.
Malone.
Yes.
Regano.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
The motion passes. The next item is public participation, and it did not look like anyone had signed up for that. Item 10.22, Springboro Plasified Employees Association Report. Is there anyone here from the association? Next item then, pre-arranged public participation. Is there none? Okay. Public participation otherwise on any agenda item. Item number three, Treasurers' Report. Ms. Lloyd?
These are the financials for July 2014.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the Treasury Report as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Vote please.
Craig Malone.
Yes.
Regano.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
The motion passes. Item 3.2, approval of fund-to-fund transfers. The request is to approve a fund-to-fund transfer of $16,241.69 from the general fund to the athletic fund. This is a fiscal year service work hours program associated with the Pay to Participate Program. Comments on that?
No, this is the 2014 fiscal year end total. We did have some that we had to pay out in July of this year because we had paid the per sport. Instead of just getting $100 per year, we did $100 per sport. So we did go ahead and go back and reimburse those who had multiple sports. So that will be reflected in 15's numbers because they were paid out in fiscal 15.
So this year, it's one, $100 for the year?
Per, $100 per sport.
It is.
So if you have three sports and you would like to submit, do hours for all three, then you can get $300.
And just so folks who may be watching on TV, no, or YouTube, I guess, it's probably more common with TV these days. This is for the district service credit program where students, well, it's probably more apropos for high school, but I don't know that we restricted it from junior high. I can't remember if it was.
It was high school.
It was high school. But they can reduce their pay-to-play fees by $100 if they work for 10 hours. And it's a great way to give your parents a break. You worked 10 hours, or why don't you work two hours and get them a $20 break? But you can reduce that pay-to-play fee, your parents will be reimbursed up to $100 per sport.
Very good. Is there a motion to accept this transfer?
So moved.
There's move, is it second?
Second.
Vote please.
Malone.
Yes.
Regano.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
The motion passes. Item 3.3 is to approve, to renominate the alternate delegate to the Ohio School Board Association Capitol Conference. So at our last meeting, if you recall, Mr. Petroni was selected for this. He found that he had a conflict in schedule and was unable to attend. So he has asked us to go ahead and get a replacement. So is there a nomination for the position of alternate delegate?
I will nominate Mr. Stuckey.
Mr. Stuckey? Okay. That, I will second that nomination. So this time, can we go ahead and have a vote?
Malone.
Yes.
Regano.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Okay, next, item number four, the Superintendent's Report.
Yeah, it's the second reading, all numerous policies asking for your approval this evening.
Okay, these are motions that, excuse me, these are policies which have been previously discussed, and we had the first reading on most of these at the last meeting. Is there a motion to accept these second reading policies? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Any further discussion on any of them?
Just, I guess, a comment. You know, a number of these just reiterate law. There's, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, about 11 of these policies are just restatements of the law. In the past, we had just chosen not to adopt them since we were going to follow the equal opportunity laws and the health insurance laws and all of that stuff anyway. So at any rate, that's what the bulk of these are.
Very good.
I have a question. Since Petronis are here, I believe the bylaws have to have a majority of the board, so they have to be in board. So the bylaw for the executive session, you won't be able to, have to pull out.
Okay, just for those of you that heard Ms. Lloyd, one of these is a bylaw change that requires a student majority or, again, four out of five board members voting. Since there's only three of us, we're unable to act on that, so that was being pulled off. The rest are policy changes which require a simple majority. Okay. So bylaw 0166, which deals with executive session, is being removed. Okay? All right. With that said.
That will be kept at first reading?
Um, yeah.
That's all we did together.
Okay. Motion over.
Um, yes, Stuckey and then Regano.
Okay, very good. Any further discussions on the policy changes? If not, go ahead and vote, please.
Malone.
Yes.
Regano.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
The motion passes. The item 4.2, policy revision, the first reading, deals with the bylaw 0157. That is appointment to the joint vocational school board member. Mr. Petry, comment on that, please.
Yes, actually, I am working with the JVSD superintendent on this. Mr. Regano had expressed a weight to simplify it, and there was some question about that from, on their behalf, and wanted a little more discussion about. They were afraid that that perhaps didn't fully follow the law. So I'm going to get more information on that, and I'll send it to all of you so that you can make the best decision possible. I didn't want you to go ahead and vote on this tonight when someone said, "Well, maybe it's a portion of the law that might not fully be there with the way it was simplified." So I can't say that I disagree with what Mr. Regano said, but I figured it'd be better to err on the side of the safe.
Sure, sure. Simply, whatever we're doing that affects the Career Center, we want to make sure that Career Center is aware of that and, in essence, gives us their blessing, whatever policy we come up with.
Then we have plenty of time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if I might make contact too. My suggestion, right now, the way the policy is drafted, I think language coming straight from the policy advisor, you, because the Career Center Board of Education, we're one of the several member school districts that makes an appointment of a board member there, and the law recently changed requires that that Career Center Board have, I want to say, three fifths of its members, which would be four of their seven, have to reside within the boundary of the member school districts. The other members could be selected from outside that boundary, assuming they met the little professional qualifications. My suggestion was, is that instead of requiring Mr. Petry to coordinate, and you're certainly welcome to coordinate, but I would, I would just make the policy permissive as opposed to explicitly requiring it, and just say that I think in every case, we would appoint somebody that was within our territory. I can't imagine that we couldn't find somebody in our territory, and I can't imagine us wanting to appoint somebody from outside our territory. So I was just suggesting the simplification, that instead of requiring Mr. Petry to go and coordinate with the Warren County Superintendent Board and other school districts potentially, that we just say to them, "We're going to appoint somebody from, with our jurisdiction, so you don't have to worry about us. We're gonna, we'll fulfill one of those four of seven that needs to be from within the boundary." And I don't have a problem taking more time to investigate that language, but I know that the law gets into this three fifths thing. I'm just saying, let's just do away with that and say that we're going to appoint from within our boundaries.
All right, I'll keep checking on that, Mr. Regano. See if I can't come to an agreement, all that makes everyone happy, and bring it back for the next meeting.
Thank you. Okay. The next item then is item 4.3, approval to adjust the coaching salary structure for the 2014-2015 school year to align with the academic supplemental salary structure approved in the 2013-14 negotiated contract. Is there a motion to bring this to floor?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second. Discussion?
I'll, quick question. This would require additional transfer of funds from general fund to the athletic fund? Is that true?
We don't know at this time, but I assume it would. It will increase our overall cost for the athletic part, yes, by about $13,000. But after.
That was before we were here. We don't have a cost yet because we haven't, well, we haven't filled all of the positions yet, so it depends where they would be at. For instance, it shows zero to three years experience would be at 13.5% of a bachelor's zero. That would be that supplemental. If you're there for, if you're four to six years of experience, it's 15.5. So depending on who is hired in those positions at that time, it would be different costs. We don't have an actual cost yet because we're not sure who all will be filling those positions. We're just basically saying it's going to bring them up to the same as the academic supplementals and the other supplementals. And have.
If we hired the same folks that filled those spots last year, it would cost more.
Absolutely. And please understand, it's my recommendation that we haven't given our coaches salary increase, anything, in seven years. We're having a very difficult time keeping coaches and filling the positions altogether. And our parents have high expectations for us to deliver. We need to have a competitive salary, so this will put us back into the running of some of these things. Hopefully improve all areas of sports, not just those dominant sports such as boys' football and basketball. We need to look at all areas.
The thing I looked at, I suppose, when we were considering this, is of all the groups of individuals who have supplemental contracts or regular contracts, all groups have received a raise except the coaching staff. The club advisors, department chairs, et cetera, all non-athletic supplementals have received a raise because they're still under the master agreement between the board and the associations. The coaching positions are not under the master agreement, and therefore, nothing has been done with their base salary for six or seven years.
Correct. Fifty years, seven.
So to me, it's a matter of fairness. You bring everybody up to the same playing field rather than continue to have the coaches lag behind, and that's my basis for supporting it, is the fact it's a matter of fairness. Everyone else has received a raise, the coaches have.
Well, Dr. Malone, if I could add, this is our only area that does not have a union. They're not part of a union. And from my stance, we don't give raises just because they have unions. We give raises to show our appreciation for the great things they do and continue that on for the kids. So I think it's only right if we want to run an organization that's fair to everyone, union or no union, we want to keep a fair salary schedule so we can attract the best candidates for our students.
Any more comments?
When was the last, you mentioned that they had had a raise since, it was a base salary raise since.
Correct.
Since, what was the year?
2007, 2008.
2007, 2008. And since.
And there was no increase during that time either.
But since then, there was steps.
No. No, they've been on zero. They had nothing to where all the other areas have had something.
In 2011, I believe, is when they froze everybody. So if you had years of experience going up to 2011, you were froze at that time on that spot. In addition, that's still being on the '07-'08 bachelor's base percentage. And then if, say, you left a sport and came back to it, so if you left for a year and came back, you didn't get to bring any of those years of experience back with you either. And then anybody they started in '11 and forward, they started at zero as well. So pretty much, everybody that's been hired since '11 has been on zero, and as well as anyone hired before '11 has been frozen on whatever step they were at at the time the froze happened, which was in 2011, or whatever.
Well, and something else to think about, when we have coaches in these positions for years and they become popular and they have winning seasons, what people aren't thinking about is a winning football season, last year, our gates for a winning football season and a great band, a group, was almost $100,000. So now we have our camps to where they're 80-20 split. When we have popular coaches, we attract lots of kids to camp. So even though this might be $13,000 to $15,000, we've made almost $30,000 off the 20% we received just off of camps. So some of these high caliber coaches that we have, their reputation is making us a lot of money. And just this summer alone, we had a lot of school districts trying to recruit our football coaches to their districts, so, and he was looking at leaving here, and I won't name districts, but $20,000 to be the football coach and keep all the money for camps. That's really common practice. So if we want to be competitive, sure, we can look at the bottom line and realize we're raising, raising costs, but if we're not going to have a competitive salary, we're going to lose on the other end as well. So what we're trying to do is stay in the hunt. People love working with our kids, and they're willing to stay here and raise their families here, but it has to be a competitive pay structure, and this will keep us back in the game.
Okay, vote please.
Malone.
Yes.
Regano.
No.
Stuckey.
Yes.
The motion passes. Item 4.4, approval of outstate athletic trips.
Yes, this will discuss the last board meeting. Our athletic director discussed various trips they're taking in, the process and guidelines that'll be followed, but we do need your blessing before we're able to permit that to happen.
Is there a motion to accept this?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Moving second. Discussion? Vote please.
Regano.
Yes.
Malone.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
Motion passes. A report from the Director of Human Resources.
For the superintendent, we are looking for approval to employ contracted services for Title I. This approval is a consultant contract for Title I tutor reading and dentist elementary.
Is there a motion to accept this recommendation?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Move the second, a discussion. Vote please.
Malone.
Yes.
Regano.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 5.2, approval to create two classified positions.
Bringing forward superintendent, we are looking for approval for two educational assistant positions at the junior high school. These are new students coming into the district in need of one-on-one specialized services.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion to accept this recommendation to create these positions?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Vote please.
Malone.
Yes.
Regano.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
Motion passes. Just a little quick commentary for those of you that are here. The classified positions which we approved are related directly, as has been pointed out, to students who moved into our district, special needs students that need a, 100% of the time. This is very common. When students move in with special needs, we have the obligation and responsibility to meet those needs. And so this is a very typical type of thing that we have approved here.
Thank you for expressing that, Mr. Preston. Appreciate it.
5.3, approval of personnel items.
For the superintendent, I bring forward 40 personnel items for approval that have been listed on the board report.
Is there a motion to accept these personnel items?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Vote please.
Malone.
Yes.
Regano.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
The motion passes. Item 5.4, approval of stipend for certified staff member.
This comes through by the superintendent and the executive director of instruction. This is a one-year, 2014-2015 position. It's a specialized position for gifted educational support. As Mrs. Strittenberger has said in the last couple of meetings, we are expanding our gifted services into the sixth or eighth grade, and this person will be given support both in the gifted classes, both at dentists and five points, and now will be also be given that support with the sixth or eighth in that inception of that program.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion to accept this recommendation for the stipend?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Vote please.
Malone.
Yes.
Regano.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
Motion passes. The Director of Special Education, report please.
Yes, tonight, I bring forward approval of student service and private placement contracts. These are for transportation to students that we do not house in our district but receive specialized instruction and services in other schools around our area. And as you can see, there are two. One of them is the UTS, Universal Transportation Systems, and the second is transportation to Vendalea Butler School.
Very good. Is there a motion to accept this recommendation for student services contract?
So moved.
Move second?
Second.
Vote please.
Malone.
Yes.
Regano.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
The motion passes. Okay, item number seven, board member reports, comments, and questions. Mr. Stuckey, any comments on, sorry, you ran there.
Wow. Didn't know we'd get here that fast. Seems like we got off to a pretty good start this year. Looking forward to the first football game this Friday at Mason, I believe, and then we're home the following Friday against Centerville, which will be a big one, so.
Okay, very good. Regano?
Welcome back to all the students. I'm sure that, you know, they've been bored stiff over the summer. And so, welcome back. Craig Colston.
Yep.
Craig and I ran together for the board in my first term in 2001, and so I do remember Craig fondly, and he did serve the district for a very long time, and condolences to Craig's family and friends. We'd like to make a couple of comments about Common Core. The state legislature, the state House of Representatives is now having hearings on the repeal bill, and I just wanted to spell a couple of myths that are out there. One of them, one of them is that this is a state-controlled initiative and continues to be so, and that's really not true. Common Core was devised by the National Governors' Association and the Council of Chief School Administrators, and both of those are trade groups, trade organizations, like OSBA is. And so to say that that's a state-controlled initiative isn't, isn't right. That would be the same as when OSB, OSBA publishes one of their legislative agenda items, that would be the same as saying it was something that was put forth by the school districts, which isn't true. It's, it's put forth by that organization and not by the individual school districts. And the same is true with these two trade organizations, that it's put forth by them and not all the various states. There's, it's, the Common Core standards are not a public document in the sense that if a state legislature or government had made it, it would be a public document. There's not been public reviews. In fact, there's not been, other than repeal legislation, there's not been legislative involvement by any state that I'm aware of. No public voice in developing those standards. So it's, it's a misnomer to think that that's a state-led initiative. The other thing I want to address is that learning codes by zip code are problematic. That's another, that's another thing that some people are touting as an advantage, that, that, you know, if a student is in Springboro and they have the same standards as the, they moved to Montana, and then, you know, they can pick up where they left off. Well, that may be true. That may be true, but I think that there's also a huge advantage in having different standards for different zip codes. I don't think that Springboro should have the same standards as, as other school districts that might serve a different clientele. I would like to think that we could have very high standards, and our students would succeed even, even better with the high standards than they might today. So I don't see standards to change from district to district as a problem at all. I think that's an advantage, particularly for a school district like Springboro. So a couple of those things that I just wanted to spell. I'll spare you all tonight. I did submit testimony, proponent testimony for HB 597, which was the repeal bill, and I'll, I'll save that for another day. Or if somebody really wants to go, I'm sure that they posted it online somewhere out of the state legislature, so. I guess with that, I'll pass the baton.
Thank you, thank you. I just want to restate also our condolences to Mr. Colston. I, I know of no one in the Springboro community that was a stronger advocate for kids than he was. He always made his positions known, and almost always. It was a true, a true position that put the children of Springboro first. Just one very brief comment about what Mr. Regano stated on Common Core, and it's been stayed here many, many times. The Common Core is not exclusive. It is a baseline. It is something to build on. I totally agree that the Montana curriculum should be different than the Springboro curriculum, but should we have the same baseline curriculum? I believe we should, because the students need that baseline information, and that's what the Common Core is. It's not the end-all, be-all, the comprehensive, it's the baseline. And that has, what we have continually focused on here in Springboro is we are still. is we are establishing this baseline. In no way do we expect our teacher to teach only at that level. They have never taught at the basic level, and I don't think they're going to be starting now. So, thank you. Okay, moving on, public announcements?
Yes, just to bring you up to speed, the Thirst Project, which is involving Franklin City Schools and Springboro Schools are going to come together to hopefully generate money to build water wells in Swaziland. So at the Franklin-Springboro Football Game on September twelfth, we've invited Franklin Board of Education, our Board of Education, hopefully both the mayors. All of us will be recognized at the halftime. And then directly after that game, we will actually have fireworks. Bob Westerhill, he's the owner of Side Effects. He has worked with his church and just really has taken this on as a personal mission. And one of our students last year in sixth grade, who goes to his church, also took it on as a personal mission. So it's just really blossomed into, we have lots of sponsors and everything trying to provide for this. So that night is going to be a lot of fun. We are going to sell T-shirts for the Thirst Project, and we just want to invite the whole community out. It's a great night, and I think the church up the street's having something that night. So it should be just a fun night in Springboro. And we'll also get to celebrate our victory over Franklin at the football game. Of course, the superintendent of Franklin and I always liken it to a kid about that. After the camera was off, he's like, you don't have to worry about that. No, I don't. We're looking forward to that. Also, school did get off to a great start. We are working through BYOT, of course, in grade six through eight. It's one, that's planned because they've done it. At the high school, we're working through that. We're making adjustments as we've received feedback from our parents. But of course, we're in, what, the second day of school. So looking forward, moving forward on that. And a lot of work's under that, and it's much appreciated. Outside of that, I don't have to be there right now.
You said introduce us at halftime?
Exactly.
What does that mean?
Well, we'll just, well, you will have to give ten minutes. We'll just walk down on the field, all both boards, just to show our urgency for this and just wait for the crowd. They're going to really give the crowd at halftime an understanding of what the Thirst Project is all about. And then directly after that, let people know to stay in the stands after the game is over because we will have a six-minute fireworks display just out past the high school. I know Mr. Westerhill wanted it closed to the stadium, but legally it has to be four hundred feet away from basically anything. So we had to put it out in the field from the high school. But it's still going to be a really cool night. So we have a lot of people with him, so you don't have to be there. Just wait for the crowd.
Very good. I, I believe that's also the Heart of the Panther all clash reunion self-activities, isn't it?
Oh, I, I, it could be.
I believe it is.
Isn't that night as well?
The Heart of the Panther run is Saturday morning, the second.
Thirteenth, it is.
Very good.
Where does that run start at? Does it start at the high school or does it start at downtown, or do you guys know?
I assume, if you're just going to follow the Ralph Wade course. If that's the case, it starts at SI.
I think it's at SI, that's what I thought, all right.
Okay, very good. Okay, if we move on then to item ten, going into work session. Do we just?
Yeah, we missed the item one.
Did we miss something?
Future considerations.
Okay, are there any future considerations?
I, I did want to ask a question on what I think would be a future consideration. We've been having some, I'll say, warm-up discussions on a Borough Fest. And the question that crossed my mind was that we have recently leased our, gotten into this arrangement to lease our facilities with, I don't know if the deal's been signed yet or not, but the, the lease agreement with that Rock Mill put forward, I guess at the last meeting, or maybe it was July. And the question is, does that lease put any restrictions on us in what we may be able to do with our?
The Rock Mill, the energy project lease for, we're not leasing it. If we do Borough Fest, which right now is off the table, if we did Borough Fest, there would be no lease, it's just a facility used for.
No, I understand we're not going to lease to the Borough Fest folks. But the, the financial agreement for the five million dollars that we didn't borrow, but it was that, that lease arrangement, right? A lot of times, your landlord puts restrictions on what you can do, okay? Because basically, we're, we're going to be the landlord for these guys to get the five billion dollars. And so the question I have is, did that lease agreement include any particulars that would prevent us from doing Borough Fest?
Not that I'm aware of. The next board meeting, we'll be bringing back the final contract and all of that before we actually do the financing. And so the stipulations of the financing will be at that time. So at this time, I don't believe so. And it's a, the way it works is, is we lease that, let's see, we lease them the land and then they lease us the buildings back for our use.
Right.
So.
So they become the landlord.
So to speak. But, but then they get, then they relinquish all of their rights to the land and the buildings so that we can do the improvements. So it's complicated, it's a hard thing to explain. But no, I don't believe there's any restrictions. We actually currently have one now with the, I'm not sure which issue it was, which project it was. But there is one right now, we're part of the high school as well as the board office is also with her one. So, and there, there's no restrictions there. So I don't believe there's any restrictions. But we'll get all the final details next time, but we can definitely check.
Good question.
Are there any other future considerations? All right, if not, then moving into the work session portion of our meeting. Committee reports, are there any committee reports? Okay. Tara, Robert's Rules of Order.
Yes, this will actually be a quick one tonight because at the last board meeting, we had decided that we were going to have a discussion about the Robert's Rule of Order and possibly adopt this as a way for us to organize our meetings. However, if Charles and David Trudy will need to be here to be part of this discussion. So I went ahead and provided you guys with your books, and I'll make sure that Charles and David get their books. And then that way, by the next board meeting, we can have an actual discussion at the work session. Because I feel like everyone needs to be able to have their input and be able to, to talk about this.
Very good. Okay, ten point three, dual credit memorandum, understanding between the University of Cincinnati and the high school. Ms. Cook.
Thank you. Last year, you voted to approve that we have a mandatory course for graduation for students called Financial Literacy. The University of Cincinnati is working with our business department to provide a hybrid curriculum, including some of the curriculum that we previously used in our finance class and also what the university uses in their finance classes. We are looking at a dual enrollment agreement with them, which you have before you, which would allow our students' families to purchase university credit through University of Cincinnati. So this is not a, an agreement whereby we will be asking for financial outlay from the board or, or any part of the district, but rather, the parent has the option. All curriculum will be delivered to students the same, regardless of whether or not they are working for university credit. This is just one more opportunity for our students to graduate with college credit on their transcripts.
Comments?
Yeah, did I hear you right, that, that parents would be paying for these credits if the students?
Yes, this is an optional credit purchase. So all students will be gaining high school credit. And if they, if their family chooses to finance the credits through the University of Cincinnati, they can gain a dual credit, which will allow them point six, I'm sorry, will allow them three credit hours through the University of Cincinnati on top of that.
So, so how's this different than the PSEO program? Where in that program, students don't have to pay. And they're changing the name, it's going to be College Credit Plus going forward, if I'm right, I think I'm right on that. But how's, how are these programs different then?
Okay, dual enrollment programs can be offered in various manners. We do have students who take dual enrollment credit strictly online with a professor at a university. We also have students who take credit from one of our instructors who is employed by a university as a volunteer adjunct professor. And we have a hybrid, which would be this course, whereby the teacher is an adjunct volunteer through the university as well as one of our employees that is in non-paid position through the university. So this is different from PSEO in that.